It's bring meeting to order, roll call please.
Councilmember Alonah.
Here.
Councilmember Eugenia. Councilmember Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Bertin Bernworth.
Here.
Mayor Jalen.
Present, please stand for pleasure, please. It's Jennifer Yon.
Ready, begin. I would simplify the United States of America. And you will be called for his sentence. Why should I come? And if so, that they can just stop.
Do you have any adjustments to the agenda tonight?
Mr. Mayor, we will be pulling item E one from the regular meeting agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make some adjustments to the agenda, please. Like to move E seven, E eight, and E nine to consent.
Nine, seven.
And E eight.
And E eight, okay. Okay, we'll have to have a motion in a second on that, correct? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Is there any announcements taken in closed session? Any action?
No, there were two items discussed and no reportable action at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public appearances, C one, matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand, be acknowledged by the mayor, and at that time state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves right to place a time limit on each person's presentation at three minutes. It's requested that longer presentations be submitted to the council writing. Would you like to speak at this time? Mr. Phillips.
Alan Phillips, Ivy Fairgrounds, two hundred East Second Street here in Imperial. Just wanted to say one, thank you very much for the street improvements that were done on Second Street. It really made a huge difference to that street. We're very committed to landscaping and making that place look the way that it deserves with that new street. Secondly, I wanted to say thank you to the city for the use of the water barriers during fairgrounds or during fairtime where we were able to use those to block the streets rather than the K rails that we normally would. We probably would have messed up the street and been having to pay to get it fixed. So those were very helpful, the staff loved those things. So hopefully in the future, we may be able to partner up and kind of come up with some sort of sponsorship type of thing and potentially use those again. So again, just thank you guys very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move in, excuse me. Yep, now I'm moving into proclamations. Okay. Shall I read them there or here, what would?
Wherever you would like, it might be easier for there and then we'll have them come up and take votes.
Okay, the first proclamation is National Public Works Week. Whereas the city council recognizes public works facilities and services of vital importance to the health and well-being of our community. And whereas the public work services provide the city of Imperial, or Imperial community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support and understanding of informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work system and programs such as streets and highways, water and wastewater utilities. And whereas the health and safety and comfort of the city of Imperial greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Imperial, Imperial's public service staff, who are responsible for rebuilding and improving our community's transportation infrastructure, water supply, water treatment, and wastewater systems, public buildings, and other facilities essential to our citizens. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Imperial, do hereby proclaim the week of May fifteenth to the twenty-first of two thousand twenty-two as National Public Works Week. And the city of Imperial encourages all citizens to join us in observance. In witness thereof, we have set our hands and caused the seal of the city of Imperial to be affixed herewith on the fourth day of May two thousand twenty-two.
Real quick, I wanted to thank the council for their continued support to our facilities, through the water and the wastewater, and of course, our streets and everything else that we partake in. You guys have been very essential to the success of what we do for the public. So I just want to thank the council and of course, you know, our city manager and assistant city manager for always being there and supporting us and standing behind us and pushing us to excel and be better. So, thank you.
Thank you. Eddie, how many years you been here at the city?
September will be fifteen years.
Fifteen. And Jackie's been around since I started. So I think we did pretty, in fact, I think Jackie come on after me because I was with Vince Long, we were trying to get somebody in. And at that time, I knew what he could do, but I think the biggest thing is, is in all of that time of me being here, you guys have always been, and the day before you had the equipment you have now, you were MacGyvers that could literally fix anything. So when we got ourselves in a pickle, you always pulled us out and we really appreciate that. And all of the city working crew and the things you guys do, you do a fantastic job. Thank you. Yes, well, and to the citizens of Imperial too, so, thank you. Okay, now I have one more. This one you'll like. National Police Week. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the third week of May as National Police Week. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of law enforcement agencies. And that law enforcement personnel recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder. And whereas the eighteen peace officers of the city of Imperial Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens of Imperial. And whereas the city of Imperial recognizes and remembers the forty-four peace officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty in Imperial County since nineteen oh two. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Imperial, do hereby proclaim the week of May fifteenth to the twenty-first two thousand two, or twenty-two, as National Police Week. And the city of Imperial encourages all citizens to join us in recognizing law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to our community. And in no so doing have established themselves an invaluable reputation for the preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Be it further proclaimed that we call upon the citizens of Imperial to observe Sunday, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And authorize the American flag at all city facilities to be lowered to half-staff in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their communities and to further recognize the servicing surviving their families of fallen heroes. In witness thereof, we have set our hands and caused the seal of the city of Imperial to be affixed herewith on the fourth day of May two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, guys.
And Mr. Mayor and members of the council, just a reminder that this Friday at seven PM at the courthouse will be the Imperial Valley Law Department. Memorial service.
Will we be attending?
If it is open to the public.
Well, it's city.
This Friday, yes.
And we're gonna move on to C two, matters appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item appearing on the agenda, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor and at that time state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. Would you like to speak at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a comment that was submitted to the city manager's office on Tuesday, May third, from a resident specific to item E five on tonight's agenda, that I'll read into the record with your permission.
Do.
My name is James D. Jones. As an Imperial resident, I am in full support of the above ordinance referencing E five on this evening's city council regular agenda. Having this ordinance will improve safety and health for all, thank you.
Moving on to D consent agenda. Anyone want to entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to E two, discussion action, Imperial Unified School District, Measure A.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to introduce representatives here tonight to discuss item E two, Jimmy Sanders, the Imperial Unified School District's school architect, as well as the assistant superintendent, Mr. Rubicava. And please take the podium whenever you're ready, gentlemen.
Good evening, thank you for hosting us tonight. I don't want to take too much of your time, but I'm here to give you a little bit of information on our bond that will be upcoming. We appreciate your support and continued support to the district for everything that goes on here in the county. Obviously, we're very excited about everything that goes on at all of our schools. You know, obviously, we hear about our basketball teams, we hear about our football teams, but obviously, our elementary schools, our middle school, our alternative schools are growing, the city of Imperial is growing quite a bit. The city of Imperial is growing quite a bit, so we're trying to keep up with that growth at all of our sites. And for those of you that drive around town, you can see our new elementary school with Cross Elementary, now that COVID hopefully is in our rearview mirror, we have kids there every day at all of our sites. You know, we're working through, you know, some of the bugs that we would have probably found at Cross, we've had some issues here and there, but it's a great new campus. And we're working on some renovations at our different sites, we have a multipurpose room going up currently at the high school that you've probably seen, it seems like it's, my office is just right behind it, it seemed like for a while, there wasn't much going on, all of a sudden overnight, it seems like it's there. So we're here to kind of give you an update on to what we have going. I pass out a handout, I'm not gonna read everything there, but it's kind of for you to see what Measure A will entail and what we're looking to do, you know, I think the things that you want to hear about are those things that are joint-use facilities. You know, I look at Ms. Haller, because we work very closely with trying to provide our pool, our gyms, our classrooms to your, for your recreation programs that go on during the summer. You know, we know some of our staff work with you on those things as well, but I think it's a great partnership that we have in order to be able to provide those services. One thing that I wanted to mention that we'll be doing, which will kind of affect some of those things, is with summer school, we will have what's called an expanded learning program. A lot of cities call it the ACES programs, so some of you that may live in other cities or know, unfortunately, Imperial, because of the demographics, we don't qualify for some of that, but we have, we are receiving some grant monies that we're hoping to use, and we're gonna try that out during the summer. And it very much like ACES, having those programs available at our elementary sites, especially this summer, and hopefully moving on to the middle school. But without further ado, I just want to look at there what the bond is about, again, a fifty million, fifty million dollar general obligation bond program, you know, to continue to provide the services that we so needed at our schools. But I'm gonna turn it over to Jimmy, so he can tell you again what we're currently, what our master plan is like and the things that we're hoping to continue to provide, and that will definitely help the city of Imperial as well. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Sanders.
Thank you. A pleasure to be here. So jumping right in on our presentation, we'd like to present to you the projects that the school district is planning in the near future that Measure A would support. So this first slide is a slide of the existing high school campus. And so there are several projects planned for the improvements of Imperial High School. So I'm just gonna run down through those really quickly. The first project is the new gymnasium modernization. So the school district refers to the new gyms as the new gym and the old gym, even though the new gym now is still several years old, or is several years old, we still call it the new gym. So that gym's gonna be modernized. We also have planned to modernize the old gym, so they end up with two gym floors that they can use for both students and community use. And then part of that project, when we modernize the old gym, we're also gonna be adding a new wrestling and weight room, multipurpose room addition there on the west side of the old gym. We also have planned a new concession and restroom building right there on the south side of the new track. We have a new multipurpose cafeteria building, and that's the one that Roger referred to that's currently under construction. I want to point out that one of the things that we like to communicate to the community is that in order to receive state funds, for which the district has received state funds, you have to have a match. If you don't have a match, well, you can't receive the state funds, and the only way to get a match is with a local bond. So the district is receiving several million dollars from the state of California for that project. And in reality, that's money that the good citizens of Imperial have sent up to the state. And in order to get your fair share back, we have to have the match. So that project's under construction and the district, again, is receiving several million dollars, I believe the total is about five million dollars that they're receiving from the state on that project. The next planned project is a two-story administration classroom building, and that would go directly on the east side of the new gym where the relocatables are now. We take those relos out and we put in a new two-story building. And so as you all know, we're, we need space there. And so as we've done at some of the other high school campuses in the valley now, we're starting to go up. So we're proposing a two-story student services and classroom building there. We currently have at the Division of the State Architect, a new CTE AG and welding, state-of-the-art welding facility. So that's at the state now. Once that's approved and we start construction, they're scheduled to receive about three million dollars from the state for that project. We have a new bus loading and unloading area back in the sports field area. There is a new two-story sixteen classroom building planned. Where the current district office is now, that's gonna be, that's planned to be torn down and to build that sixteen two-story classroom building. We'll be converting the existing advent to classrooms and then, right now, we're currently under construction to add four more relocatable classrooms because they're just busting at the seams, they need classrooms. So we're gonna be providing over the summer four of those twenty-four by forty temporary relos until we can get some of these other projects constructed. We plan on building a, and modernizing the existing sport fields, and then last but not least, the joint-use aquatic facility. So that's really what we wanted to showcase here tonight. This is our, or any questions about the master plan there at the high school or any of those projects that you have any questions about? So this is the proposed aquatic center, it includes an eight-lane competition pool, what we refer to as a deep pool, meaning that it's at least six and a half feet deep so that the swimmers can score some fast times. And then it also includes a rec pool. So that's a planned view. Few different shots there, that's a shot of both the rec pool and the eight-lane competition pool. I want to point out that one of the features, it includes a lot of shade around on all sides of both the rec pool and the competition pool. So, and those shades are proposed to support spectators for the competition pool and then the smaller shades around the rec pool, just to support recreational swimming. So there's a close-up of the eight-lane competition pool, includes the Colorado Timing System, state-of-the-art eight-lane competition pool, they'll be able to hold CIF matches at this location. And then the final shot there is a shot of the splash pool or the rec pool. Now, we still, we still need to work with the end users as to the different depths, proposed depths for that facility, so that we would be able to, so that it supports both recreational use, swimming instruction, and community use. So we look forward to working out all those details. So that concludes our presentation. Any questions?
I have questions. Surprised, right? No. So I'm reading your deal here, Mr. Rubicava, it says forty-nine dollars for a hundred thousand, so it averages to... For a hundred thousand dollar home, right? There's no hundred thousand dollar homes. So we're looking at about a hundred and fifty thousand. I'm sorry, a hundred and fifty dollars, because at least three hundred thousand dollar homes is what they're all going for. Now, my concern is, I mean, I love what's going on, we gotta add all this stuff, Imperial's getting bigger, but we just added a tax here about four years ago. What was that, Measure O? Yeah, the pre-response, Measure O, that one hit us for about a hundred and fifty dollars too. Another hundred and fifty dollars, another three hundred dollars, the red that is to have it in there. That's just my comment.
You know, see, as far as looking at it from the standpoint of what people get for those, you look at the Cross Elementary, like, I'm sorry, like Jimmy said about with part of the money that we got back from the state, it's like the matching money is what we get reimbursed for some of those monies we're able to put back into the facilities that we're building. So I think that's the key there, that if the stakeholders, constituents are gonna ask what we're doing with that money, I think it's that the facilities, the schools that people move into Imperial for are getting those schools, they're getting kind of the return on their dollar. And that's what we're hoping, and that's, you know, that we can go back and say, well, the money, the bonds, that's where that NPR came from, that's where Cross came from, and I think that also why you see that we are a school district that is not in declining enrollment. You can look at El Central Elementary, you know, one of the things that we deal with on a daily basis at our office is people that come in that are buying homes that are part of El Central Elementary and come back and say, well, I didn't know that, and then now they're having to request an inter-district. And so those type of things are things that, you know, make people kind of make decisions as to where they're purchasing their homes and why they're willing to pay the additional taxes to, you know, because of Cross, because of these other things that are going on, the NPR, the new pool, which I'm sure is the same thing in El Central, you know, that why people would wanna, you know, pay for the bond that built the new STEM building in El Central, right? So I think that's what I'm trying to tell you, is that I hope that if people are looking at that, one of the things that we try to do when given the opportunity is if we can refinance a bond, which is one of the things that we are looking to do on that previous bond, is in doing that, it would recalculate it and we would save the taxpayers' money.
Our rates are going up. We went from two point four, two point two, nowhere up to four point five right now on our interest rates. I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm for the school, my kids go there. But we also gotta look out for residents, you know, we gotta, we want to be inviting, we want them to be in Imperial, we want them to go to our schools.
And to answer that question, I think you have to have schools that are gonna, that I'm willing to say, I'm willing to pay that extra money to put my kids in Imperial schools. And I think that's, that's why we're having to put relocatables at the high school. That's why we're, this year, we're moving Holbrook back to Holbrook, which all of you knows our alternative school, which we had closed for the last couple of years. And because of the continued growth and the need for classrooms, we're gonna move Holbrook back. And those are all things that I can tell you, well, if people are gonna come and tell you, we would tell them the same thing, that look, it costs money to build these things, and if people are gonna make a decision as to why they should bring their kids to any one of our schools, whether it be coming into a TK, that's another thing that we're looking, TK rules are changing, the number of kinder preschool kids, TK kids that are gonna be able to come into school is gonna happen, and believe me, we deal with inter-districts that I've had to go to the Imperial County Office of Education Board because they appeal because they want to get into our schools. And the county, their board will tell me why. And the the county, their board will tell me, why why can't you take them? Well, because they don't live in our city. And we can't take them. And and so that's kind of the thing that we say, well, i- if you wanna go to Imperial Schools, then purchase a home or rent a home in Imperial. That's the easiest way for you to get in than than to try to do an interdistrict, which is, again, it's just all about numbers, right? We have to take care of our citizens first. We have to take care of the people that live here in Imperial. And that's what we're hoping to do with these with these new facilities. But I understand, I mean, believe me, I I know what you're talking about. And I'm more than happy to answer that question because I know that's something that we get the same question with that we'll get, our board will get the same question. And we're hoping that we can tell them that i- it in the long run, you know, i- if it's worth it to, which we know the education of our children is the most important thing, that people will be willing to pay the additional monies to provide those facilities. And again, we have to I've been in the district now, I can't believe, over twenty-one years. Officer Barra was the SRO, not to date him at all. But but you know, I back to where the the numbers were back then. You know, how much smaller the high school was, but we're still pretty much in the same facility. And we're having to add the additional things. The old the old gym is is still the old, old gym. The new gym is now the new, old gym. Um, you know, one of the things that Jimmy didn't mention, which I I mentioned here, because I um that we're looking to do as well is putting in a wood floor at Frank Wright. And and that, why is that? Because we need more more facilities for our kids for, you know, three, three women, three women's teams, three men's, boys' teams. And we just, the 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 community, our old, our new gym is not big enough to hold some of the some of the games that we have there. So if we have a big game, we can have that at Frank Wright, because that is more cost-effective than to come in and tell you, we need a brand-new gym. Do you want us to put, would you rather we put an NPR or more classrooms or build a gym like Southwest? I was there at Southwest when they built that. And it's a beautiful place, but you can imagine how much it costs to maintain something like that, just like their theater. So we're trying to find the best facilities with the money that we have for for our for our uh citizens.
Question. Oh, um so on the master plan, it talks a whole lot about the high school, but I didn't see anything mentioned about any of the elementary schools other than Cross Elementary, which was on the last measure bond.
I I think because of the as it pertains to the city with the joint-use facilities with the pool, that was kind of our emphasis. But yes, one of the things that we were continuing to put in, work on is like Ben Hulse. With with building Cross, we were able to reduce the amount of students, especially at Ben Hulse, which was just huge, which impacts everyone with traffic and things like that. So we were able to reduce the amount a- and have some some additional classrooms that we actually have some of those classes from the high school at Ben Hulse. But we also know we need additional kinder classrooms, which is one of the things that we will be doing as well. Um, you know, right now at at Cross and obviously Cross is pretty much, you know, in a good place. TL Wagner also, we have additional faci- additional rooms now with the opening of Cross. But Ben Hulse does need additional kinder rooms uh and modernization. One of the, some of the projects we'll be doing this summer, I will be doing roofing projects at Ben Hulse. We'll be doing roofing projects at the high school. Uh we'll be doing, some of our summer schools this year will be at Frank Wright and at TL Wagner, where normally they're held here at Ben Hulse and at the high school, just because it's it's easier, more it's it's uh easier for our transportation. But yes, we are looking to improve uh some of those facilities at Ben Hulse and and the infrastructure, uh the technology. Uh we've gone to a one-to-one where the kids get a Chromebook. But yeah, definitely working on uh fixing up those things that are getting older, that need to be uh upgraded.
Yeah, there 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 are projects included at uh at Ben Hulse. We just showed you the the master plan for the high school tonight, but yeah, they have an app. Yeah, they
That would be great.
Yeah, we know, you know, Ben Hulse being the, just like the high school, right? Those are the kind of the the originals. And that's why we're having to work on those too. But yeah, definitely last work, last summer, we did quite a bit of roofing work at Ben Hulse as well. And we'll be doing quite a bit. That's why and we're not holding summer school at at those two sites this year.
And then I have another question on um you also put making health, safety, and security improvements. What does this include? You know, you guys just expanded another school. Would you guys need another SRO? Um, what does that include?
Well, you know, we we love our, we love our, we love our SRO. You know, we're pretty fortunate that we have, you know, the one that we have and and but we know that that SRO also covers all of our sites. Uh you have some districts that may have one, you know, for just a high school. But, you know, we're we're happy with what we have. But if if there's a partnership, I know there's been some grants that that have been um we, Brian has met with 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 the city and talking about how we might be able to add additional. Um it's something that, you know, it, you know, as the climate changes, sometimes people, you have something like a parkland happen and people will say, well, is that the best use? And then other things happen. I mean, I I'm a, I'm very much a supporter of of the because I think our SRO and the partnership that we have, it's not just about, you know, fighting crime, but making relationships with kids, meeting with parents, um citing them when the kids aren't coming to school, you know, sending them to court and holding them accountable for why their kids aren't in school. And and our our officers do a great job of doing that. And specifically Officer Ayala in this case, but we've had Officer Pharoah, Officer Barra, Officer Rubio, Officer Ramos, that I've had the the great opportunity to work and I Officer Luna. And and I think those relationships are are something that we will continue to support when possible.
Yeah, um but what it talks about health and safety improvements, is there anything else specific you guys have in mind in security for kids?
I think one of the things that you're you're seeing in the sign of the times is the the fencing around the schools. You know, before, it was pretty much your normal chain-link fence, we, you know, kind of limiting the entry and exit to the campuses. You think back to when you were in school and, you know, I always think back to where people would cross through the high through the high school to get to Ben Hulse during school time. Um, parents and people pushing strollers. Unfortunately, we can no longer do that. It it's something that had to change, but we we're we're very much about providing a a much uh more controlled campus at all of our sites. Um all of our site, we're with the with every new upgrade, we put the key, the keyless entry at the sides and trying to get that going. I think that's some of the things that we talk about providing. Um again, the fencing, um, you know, and just uh you know, the 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 additional staffing, additional uh things that need to be in place in order to be able to have uh, you know, the community feel comfortable with when they drop off their kids, uh you know, we try to get, you know, from the standpoint of crossing guards, all those things cost money and equipment. Uh working with the city on, you know, the changing of the of the traffic over by Frank Wright with the new growth over there. And that's been a great partnership with with uh again, with the police department and a- us adding additional staff to try to make that work and moving our transportation drop-off. So those are all things, I think, with with uh one of the things that that would kind of be included in there is is moving our current transportation and maintenance yards that are very much outdated. You know, we've purchased the boat property, putting that over behind Frank Wright. And I think that would definitely help because that does create some some gaps and holes and and the way and that would help us grow that way for the for the high school as well.
Thank you so much. I appreciate all the information.
Thank you.
I have a question about uh dual immersion and how it's going and if there are any plans for expansion.
So we are, so the way the dual immersion grows is, so for example, we started with a kinder cohort. So that kinder cohort will move up to first grade. So we'll just continue to grow. So we hired a teacher that will now be teaching in the dual immersion with one of our first-grade teachers. So it's a fifty percent. And then the the current ki- kinder teachers will will uh continue. So it it kind of grows year to year. Uh you know, as far as if the demand is there, as far as putting it at one of the other school sites, then we we do have to, we look at that. But what what that causes as well is like, for example, when when you have a dual immersion program, you have to have two teachers for every grade level, because it's a it's a kind of fifty-fifty, right? So that that does kind of grow the campus that way. Uh but if we, right now, we're we're doing kinder enrollment. And if we find that there's more people that want it, as it becomes more popular, then we will try to add additional classroom uh classes. It has to kind of go with grade level. You can't just say we're gonna put in a second-grade group, because that it wouldn't work. It has to just kind of continue to grow year to year. But it has been very successful. Um, you know, we haven't had a lot of um uh, you know, that's one of the areas where before we might lose some of these students to El Central Elementary, because they would go to Harding. Now, we're seeing that probably those people are now staying, right? Because they, there's not that push to get there for that program.
I have a daughter that I was going to put at Harding uh for it, but I didn't know we had it here, actually. Until recently. Now it's too late.
So it it looks like it's a, we're looking at expanding maybe other languages as well, but right now, we're happy with kind of continuing to grow it there across.
Gentlemen, I I applaud you and your whole staff and the school for just catching up to the growth all the time. I mean, it's just, I know that's been a a burden over the years. We've all grown so fast and and this is something that's needed. Um the unfortunate thing is is every time you do one of these, it's always back to tax and people look at it. But if you kind of put it in perspective, you you go have a couple of hamburgers a month, that's kind of what you're paying to have this. And I'm I'm assured that everything that you're proposing is what you're absolutely needing for growth, correct?
And we we get everybody involved, from the teachers, from the community, we have stakeholder meetings and trying to, you know, this has been something that you know, I think back to the first meeting, Jimmy, was it, I was still the principal when we first had the first meeting. You know, and it it's it's been a a work in progress and change and, you know, kind of priorities. Well, we need this, we need that. Um but I think i- as time has gone on and trying to get those those uh right things in place, we've been open to to the to the suggestion of everybody involved. You know, because one of the things, I'll be honest, one of the things that's come up is why aren't you building, like I said, a brand-new gym? Some people would love to see that happen. But you can only imagine what something like that would cost. And it it in the sense of priority and and telling people, is that where you want your money to go? You know, we'd rather say that we have, you you're, I've been, my son plays basketball and I go, we go play different places and you go to Orange County. And you have exactly the same thing, one full court where they play the varsity senior games and usually one side. We have that at the high school. The problem with the high school is if you have, you know, the the championship games, um our gym just doesn't have the bleachers for that. Whereas if we put in that wood floor at Frank Wright, we could hold some of those bigger games there when it comes down to something like that. Or also redoing the bleachers from these old wood ones to something that's a little bit more uh, you know, easier to put up and down and that you can go a little higher with. But that's a lot easier to do than to to tell you to put so much money towards a brand-new gym, which right now is not the most important thing.
I think sometimes residents really don't understand or really see what costs are and get the sticker shock of things. And that's just what it is today. And I I'm gonna vote yes on it and and support this a hundred percent, just because what you have to deal with with the state of California. I don't like them. I think they're, they suck. I think they have money to spend and they spend it on frivolous stupid things and it should be going to schools. And so um again, I uh applaud you guys for doing what you're doing. So I remember the days in Imperial when I graduated, we had army surplus crap. That's all we had for stuff at Imperial. We had eighty-five kids graduating. Remember, that's back in our day. That was a long time ago. No, but but it it was fun. It it was fun and uh and it's fun to see what Imperial's come to. I mean, it's and part of the reason why you have the growth is because you guys do so well. I mean, look at your test scores and everything else. It's still the best in the valley. And so you're you're doing very well. Thank you. Okay. Um, let's uh, anybody entertain, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion, option resolution twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, in support of Imperial Unified School District Bond Measure A.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, please vote. There you go, gentlemen.
All right.
Motion carries five-zero.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to E-three, Discussion Action, Surface Transportation Block Grant.
Evening, um uh city council members. Um E-three regarding the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program for the rehabilitation of a segment of Aitton Boulevard between Belore Way and the old uh State Road eighty-six to be programmed in the federal years uh starting twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three up to g- fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five via resolution uh twenty-twenty-two dot twenty-one. Um I'm here requesting the approval of said resolution twenty-twenty-two dot twenty-twenty-one. As a background, I can tell uh the Imperial County Transportation Commission conducted the twenty-twenty-two call for projects for both programs, the CMAC and STBG, uh which are programmed in the above- referenced uh fiscal years. Uh the city applied uh for STBG program funding for their their rehabilitation of uh the segment of Aitton Boulevard between Belore Way and the uh old State Road eighty-six. Uh the applications were rated and ranked by the ICTC Commission and will be submitted to the Technical Advisory Committee for final approval. Uh the resolution, a resolution for each application, it is required by I- by ICTC. Uh the so regarding the project itself, uh besides the restoration of the uh asphalt roadway, um we are anticipating to install uh class-two bike lanes, which is uh a high-vitability uh roadway in both sides of Aitton Boulevard. The striping would be a solid uh colored bike lane using thermoplastic in order to increase the life of the improvements. Uh the proposed material will be uh will provide a safe anti-skid uh surface even during uh raining conditions. Uh besides that, traffic signs will be installed to increase the more motorist awareness and also increase the bicyclist's safety. Um the segment of class-two uh bike lane will be part of a bicycle transportation network as illustrated in Exhibit One and Exhibit Two of the uh uh agenda item. Uh the preliminary uh cost estimate is roughly one-point-two million dollars to be paid with STBG and local funding. Um STBG portion is eighty-eight-point-fifty-three, which is roughly one-point-one million dollar. Uh city match is eleven-point-fifty-seven, which is uh one-hundred-and-forty-seven uh uh thousand dollars uh through LTA, measured the funds and circulation. Uh, the um, this process is a really uh difficult process to obtain funding. It's really competitive. Uh the Community Development Department uh work on a strong application to secure this fund because all the cities are actually looking to obtain, it's it's limited funding for the entire uh 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 county of Imperial. Uh we were successful in two projects. Uh one of them is this STBG. Uh so um the, I I'm confident to say the the funding is secured. Uh all we need is to uh get the approval for resolution twenty-twenty-two dot twenty-one, submit it to ICTC, and then uh the approval of this funding will start, the process to approval of that funding will start. Any questions?
All right, I got a couple of questions.
No, yeah, yeah, I'm here for that.
When you say rea- rehabilitation and restoration of the existing asphalt, what does that mean?
Uh the i- if you drive in this segment of Aitton Boulevard, the actual asphalt, uh the deterioration is really evident. So what we are going to do is grind approximately one-point-five inches of the surface, the top surface, we are going to add ARAM. It's a material that actually increase the 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 life of the uh the asphalt. We are going to overlay it. So basically, what we are going to have it's a similar surface that we have from Belore up to uh Austin Road. Yeah, which uh uh wh- which is really important because the i- i- uh it's not only the durability. I mean, you drive really better than the section is right now, but it decreases the contamination, the the dust, the pollution, which is important for for our residents.
Yeah. Not include the section from eight, eighty-six to Park, right?
No, no. Uh that segment of what, w- w- we we have a kind of a plan to keep uh improving uh Aitton Boulevard. Uh in this this time, basically, we're going to improve this section as we did before between Belore and and Austin. And in the next call for projects, uh that is the next segment we want to improve. If we if we want to wait until uh we secure funding from STBG, uh obviously, if if we were able to secure funding from a different source, we would be able to uh to improve that section.
Now, add to that, two meetings ago, I think it was, where we were getting a grant for four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars roughly to stripe for a bike lane from, correct me if I'm wrong- to stripe for a bike lane from, correct me if I'm wrong, Clark, I'm sorry, from Austin to Clark?
Villore.
The original one. It was three quarter, the long section that we were gonna thermoplast for almost half a million dollars and I was having a heart attack.
Yeah, no, you shouldn't, but, but.
No, I shouldn't have a heart attack because it's only plastic.
Well, not necessarily, but that is the, the next item.
So that's included in this?
No, 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 no.
That's the next item we're gonna be looking at?
That's the next item. This is E four.
Okay, that's when I'm gonna have a heart attack.
But regardless, we can, because the, the actual bike lane is the same pattern, which is this one.
So that's included in this one?
Oh, yeah, yeah. This is, this will be part of that segment. In other words, the, the people will be able to drive from Austin, if obviously if these two items are approved tonight, from Austin up to eighty-six with the same pattern along the north and the south side of Eighteen Boulevard. This is something never seen here in Imperial Valley. Again, Imperial would be the first one to do it in, with these specific conditions.
Let me get this right. For one point two million dollars, we're gonna pave and paint from Villory to eighty-six?
Correct.
For half a million dollars, we're gonna paint from Austin to Villory?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So if we save, we find another seven hundred thousand dollars, we can pave and paint the whole thing, right?
Well, you, you have to have in consideration that several things, but yes. Basically, the, the answer is just that, that the, the lengths are different, obviously, from Austin to Villory then to, from Villory to eighty-six and the conditions of the roadway, obviously, is different, but yeah.
All right, okay, thank you. So I was just trying to get clarification on this and, and I understand that it's a great project. We need to move this forward and we will. My heartburn is once again with the state of California. Because of the cost that it costs us to do this, we could be doing a lot more if we were another state. If we're in another area, we can get a lot more money, a lot more work for our money. So.
Unfortunately, we, we have to play with.
I know, we have to play with, we have to do it their way, but it just, you know, when people look at this, one point two million dollars to do this section, everybody says, well, why does it cost so much?
Yeah, and, yeah, it be limited. The other projects, I mean, other, we, we, it was a competition. I mean, it's not a fact that you're going to get the money you need. And even several cities left the room with their hands empty.
And I like our buy-in. It's only eleven point four seven percent, so it's not a problem.
Oh, yeah, it, it's a gift.
No, thank you for the clarification on that.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
So moved.
Second. Discussion for a second.
No, sorry.
It's okay. Nothing's a gift now when it comes to tax money.
Well, hang on.
And my, and my question, and I would like to, and, and clarify this for me. This was through a grant, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And is there ever a time that we get grants to just fix roads in our community? I'm just, I'm throwing that curve ball out there because I know we get money through registration. Is that correct?
As, as far as just general, general funds and grant funds that we can do just regular overlays of our, of our streets and roads?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I mean, not grants, but we have done overlays in, in, in other portions of the city because we cannot secure grants from, from Caltrans.
Okay, so we don't get, yeah. So, but what I'm getting at is unfortunately, we get our monies to be able to fix our roads through registration, correct? Yeah. So really being that our valley is so small, we get very little money. Most of it goes to the coast, to Los Angeles, San Diego, San Francisco, Palo Alto, the, the Bay Area. That's where the money goes. What's frustrating to citizens is they see a project like this, but then they have potholes in front of their house. And that's what's frustrating. And grant money like that, they have to understand. I'm only bringing this up so if people are listening, they understand that process. Unfortunately, we get dinked because we don't get anything from the state. Everything basically goes to the coast, so we don't have that money. And it's all tax money. It's all of our money, but it's put into a pool, I guess, through the state of California and only registered, that, that the amount of cars is where the money basically goes.
Look at our S B one money, your gas tax. Last fiscal year, I think we received three hundred and forty thousand dollars. We can't, we can't pave a road. We can't even stripe, we can't even stripe a bike lane. If I was to fix that hole on, on, I'm sorry, I, we were to fix that hole on D or F Street on Eleventh where the trash truck goes, that's eighty thousand dollars. I can only do a couple of holes and then we're done. You know, and so when we start to try to pave roads in the city, we don't get the money that, we're paying, go look at the gas pumps. We're paying the money, but we're not getting it back. I think I averaged it out one day on, on our, on our population. That boils down to roughly fifteen dollars per person per year. I, I guarantee you, I pay more than fifteen dollars in taxes and just gas taxes.
Other, you gotta remember, come, I think it's July first, it's going up fifty cents more.
It's gonna go up?
It's gonna go up fifty cents a gallon.
We don't see those taxes. We don't see the money. And, and you know what, Jeff? I, I will echo your concern there that we don't see the money to try to fix our roads. This, this block grant that we get, it's not for residential roads, it's for surface transportation. It's for the big roads.
Exactly. The, 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 the roads that are eligible shall be part of the Caltrans maps. The all residential's are not part of that.
No. Well, it's, it's just that I wanted to clarify that so our residents know what, what the whole process is. But I will say, by the time they get the gas up to about nine dollars a gallon, I think a lot of bicycles might go down that road because right now I don't see any. So, but anyway, I'm being facetious. Let's just move on. We have a motion and a second. Roll call. I'm, I, yeah, I'm frustrated. Vote, please.
Motion carries five zero.
Jeff, I see with I C T C, some of the money these other cities get, ridiculous.
It's mind-boggling, but I, I want the residents to know where it's going so they understand. It's not that we're being frivolous with our money and that we don't know what we're doing. It's just unfortunately our hands are tied. So, okay, let's move on to E four.
E four is similar item and now it's the, through the congestion mitigation and air quality program. And this is specific, specifically for a class two bike lane along Eighteen Boulevard, north and south of this segment between Villore Way and Austin Road. Monies will be programmed same time, federal fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five via resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two. Again, the, the city of Imperial apply for funding in this, in this case, C M A C. The project will incorporate basically just the, the bike lane with the same configuration. It's going to be along north and south side of this segment of Eighteen Boulevard. The preliminary cost estimate is roughly four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. C M A C will be paying for eighty-eight point fifty-three percent, roughly four hundred and four thousand dollars. City match again is eleven point forty-seven, which is fifty-two thousand dollars. Again, it, it is the same pattern, the same quality of bike lane. And then we are, we are going to have this first segment, which is, it's about one point, one point five miles between Austin up to all State Road eighty-six, which we anticipate is going to encourage a lot of people because what we have seen is, or hear, that they don't feel too safe because people drive so little bit fast along Eighteen. So this, this is going to give a lot of visibility and color to, to this area. We anticipate more people, more and more people, not only for, for the gas price, which is ridiculous, but also.
I'm not the only one. See, I'm not the only one.
Yeah, 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 you're right. So, we have done our homework. We secured the funding and in order to start using the money, we need the approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Just a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Five, discussion action ordinance of the city council, city of Imperial amending the codified ordinances regarding the regulation of camping and storage of personal property in public areas.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you for consideration this evening is ordinance eight twenty, as you stated, Mr. Mayor, to amend the codified ordinances of the city's municipal code regarding the regulation of camping and storage of personal property in public areas. What this ordinance does, in short, is to, one, define public areas within the city of Imperial and to set limits as to what can take place there as specific to, as it says, camping and personal property. So I'll answer any questions and our city attorney, Ms. Turner, is also available to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? Motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
And the introduction of the first reading.
A motion, a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero. I will need a, a second action on this as well.
I'll make a motion to approve and provide direction of staff to prepare a summary for ordinance number eight two zero for publication purposes.
Second.
Just a second, please vote.
Thank you. Motion carries.
All that got this forward. Thank you. Okay, E six, discussion action ordinance of the city council, city of Imperial amending the codified ordinances regarding parking of mobile billboard advertising displays.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's exactly as it sounds before you is ordinance, for your consideration this evening is ordinance eight twenty-one to amend the codified ordinances in regards to parking of mobile billboard advertising displays within the city of Imperial. This does regulate where, how, long, how big and allow our, our officers or code enforcement the tools to go out and enforce this as well. And I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Make a motion to production, first reading, but I don't have one.
Second.
Motion, a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero. I'll need a second vote as well, please.
Make a motion to provide direction of the staff to repair summary of ordinance number eight two one for publication purposes.
Second.
Just a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Another good one. Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna move on to special meeting. C one, discussion action on water treatment plant purchase.
Oh, yeah, so we have one of you and. Our, which is part of the treatment process for settling the increase. We provided some of the backup support. You can see it's increased tremendously and has gone over the signature authority of the city manager. So what we're asking is to be able to purchase this throughout the monthly without having necessary to come to you guys, ask to do something that we've budgeted for through the year. I don't know if that would be something we can do just off of the. Oh, and it keeps going up and they projected a thirty percent increase, which will also be shown in the budget for what's coming up to you guys here across the board with all chemicals and testing.
Chemicals and everything right now is going up between thirty to fifty percent.
Correct. And that's what all of our vendors have told us is to prepare for the thirty to forty percent.
They can't get a handle on this. It's hyperinflation right now. It's just going nuts. So, yep. Okay.
Question. If we were to buy a year in advance, is that something that can be stored, held, or no?
I think some of the, some of the chemicals, very much so, probably we could. I don't know that we would have the facility. We'd have to, you know, get the storage tanks and double wall them and all that other stuff to keep them on site.
So we have to actually build something for it to be able to save some money?
We do order some stuff in totes, but you can see the price difference on this is a dollar difference per pound. And that's how we purchase this and buy pound. So, I mean, we get a full tanker truck every month when this comes in.
There, there's no way to lock in a price?
Not today.
We've tried, we've tried. And that's why we put the, the gap that we have put because the actual purchase prices, we're looking at, at the time that we requested, it was almost thirteen thousand dollars. But they said that they can't, of course, guarantee the price because of shipping and because of the cost of making the chemicals. They're telling us, you know, to put your cushion in there because by the time we say, city council said yes, it could have changed two grand.
I'm just looking at projections and seeing maybe we can buy now and save ourselves a little bit of money down the road.
I mean, that could be something very much so. We could propose to them, say, hey, we would like to buy yours worth of chemicals at whatever it is.
And then lock in a price.
We're paid for it right now and you're gonna hold on your facility.
Here's the problem you're gonna have, is they're gonna tell you they can't because they don't have enough and they're trying to spread it out to everybody. And that's, that's what I encounter every day. Yeah.
I also worry about the shortage of being able to even get the chemicals.
Yep. That's the other thing.
I know there was a shortage on chlorine here, yes, sir? Um, I guess it's do the best you can, but, that water, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero. Uh, Mr. Mayor, we do have a consent agenda. That's a part of the special meeting, just as a, we can also look at that as well, please.
Well, let's just go back to it. Let's go ahead and go to be consent agenda.
To approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, have a motion, a second, please vote. Thank you, because I was gonna skip it. I thought that was, I didn't even look at it. I thought it was part of the first one.
Mr. Mayor, if you can cast your vote, please. Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, in two thousand nineteen, I was buying oil for fifteen thousand dollars load. Right now, if I bought one tomorrow, because I bought one last week, it would cost me for the same amount sixty-five thousand dollars. That's how much it's gone up. So, okay, C two, discussion action, granulated active carbon filtration system.
That's what we're asking the council to approve our annual, biannual maintenance of our G A C filters, which is the exchange of the media. At this time, we are again, once reusing our recycled, regenerated carbon at the, the cost of the ninety-two thousand nine hundred and five dollars. It is, of course, budgeted annually for two change outs at full price if we're unable to generate the, or have our carbon regenerated. So, I'll stand for any questions?
Did it go up from last time?
This one went up from, I believe it was eighty-six thousand dollars, so approximately six thousand, yeah. But we're, because we're, each time they regenerate it, they add new carbon at about twenty percent. So, I mean, the majority of it is ours.
It's not that bad.
No, but we are planning because we're getting to the point where we may have to do a full change out of new carbon. So we're planning for that.
Will that be in twenty-two, twenty-three budget?
It will be budgeted for it, but doesn't necessarily mean that we'll do it because we're gonna hold off as long as we can, of course.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second, please vote.
It's my last.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, I'm gonna adjourn the city council. Okay, I'm gonna adjourn the city council meeting until the next regularly scheduled meeting, Wednesday, June first. Uh, two thousand twenty-two at seven P M.